Mr. Garcia, can you hear me?
Mr. Salinas, I hear you.
I'm trying to get the video on.
Okay, there's voice, obviously. There you go.
I can't see anybody else. I can hear you, but I can't see you. I don't know if he has, he hasn't shared or something.
I was muted, but I see Mr. Science, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Perez is already connected, Mr. Moreno is connecting, so. Are you, Mr. Perez, is there also, Mr. Rodriguez also? Can you see some of us, Mr. Salinas?
I can see all of you.
Okay.
Did you press start video though? Oh, he's uh.
No, he's on video already, I think, where he's on picture.
He can't see us, that's what he said, right?
No, I can see you, I can hear you, and I can see you, and I will be on short.
Mr. Garcia, can you let him know, Mr. was wondering that I'm on already, he was calling me on the phone.
Okay, I will let him know, we'll let him know.
Yeah, I can hear you, Mr. Salinas, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock, and we will call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Roma Independent School District being held on this Thursday, June 25th, 2020. Order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Agenda item number one, roll call. For Vice President, Mr. Juan Antonio Science.
Here.
Board Secretary, Mr. Roberto Salinas.
Here.
Board Member, Ms. Natacia Garza Galván.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Raúl P. Moreno Jr.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Ricardo A. Pérez.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Reynaldo Rodríguez.
Here.
And myself, for President, Clarissa B. Álvarez. Before we start, I just need to read the notice of school district regular meeting to be held by video conference and/or teleconference. For the benefit of the members of our community who are listening to this meeting either live or via a recording, I would like to make a few announcements. In response to the coronavirus COVID-19, on March 16th, 2020, Texas Governor Greg Abbott temporarily suspended a limited number of open meetings lost. For the present time, school districts can conduct board meetings via video conference or teleconference instead of holding face-to-face meetings. To promote proper social distancing and in the interest of maintaining the safety of Roma ISD employees, parents, students, and board members, the district has elected to conduct this meeting via video conference. Let the record reflect that the district has complied with all applicable open meetings act posted posting requirements. Notice was posted both physically and online and on the Roma ISD website for more than 72 hours before this meeting. For the purpose of our meeting tonight, please be advised of the following. Item number one, at tonight's meeting, board members are not gathered in a central physical location, but we do have a forum to attend via video conference. Item number two, members of the board are meeting by use of Microsoft Zoom software application. Members of the public engaging in public comments will be provided access via Microsoft Zoom to allow for two-way communication. Zoom is available for download on your computers or smartphone. All members of the public will also have live access to the meeting via a live stream feed available on the district's website. This is, this is a remote meeting, and we obviously cannot promise that these systems will be free of complications, but we generally anticipate that the system will provide enough capacity to accommodate everyone. Item number three, to avoid potential connection problems, I would also encourage all members of the public to make sure you are in a location with a secure internet or telephone signal. Item number four, the district has provided notice that members of the public who wish to participate in public comments can register to do so by emailing the district in advance of the meeting. For anyone who registered in advance, who will receive, you will receive an invitation to participate in the Zoom meetings at the appropriate point in the meeting, and then afforded time will, afforded time to provide public comments. For future meetings conducted during this present emergency, the district may also allow members of the public to submit written comments in advance, which will be read by the board secretary into the record of the meeting. Item number five, all other procedures regarding the conduct of this meeting will adhere to board adopted rules. Item number six, please be aware that a recording of this meeting will also be made available to the public as required. And the last item number seven, if any person has any questions about the procedure associated with this court meeting, please feel free to contact the district. Agenda item number two is the invocation led by Mr. Juan Antonio Science, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Reynaldo Rodríguez.
Dear Father, we thank you for everyone gathered here now. Thank you that you know each of us by name and have caused us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you, and our trust is in you completely. As we surrender ourselves in adoration, we ask that you would come by our Holy Spirit and inspire our hearts today. Come fill our life with your love, fill our conversation with your grace and truth, fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this for your glory, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Agenda item number four, public comments.
There are none, no public comments.
Agenda item number five, the consent agenda. This includes item A, approval of minutes of the previous minutes, I'm sorry, the previous meetings. Item B, approval of bills. C, investment report. D, financial update report. E, transportation report. F, tax collection report. G, fixed asset report. H, student enrollment report. I know all of this was uploaded onto Board Book. If anybody has any questions at this time, I have a comment for Mr. Guzmán. If you would please, for meetings, add another item on there, maybe five. I, for pending litigation to be discussed within the consent agenda going forward.
Okay, we will take care of that.
Mr. Guzmán, just, just a reminder, and just because I know it's part, or some of the information I requested is part of the consent agenda, a reminder of the, of the information I requested, Mr. Guzmán, it's already been two months. If you can please look into that, I'd appreciate it, sir.
I will again communicate with Mr. Perez as far as the status of the information requested.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
How back can we, can we request information, Mr. Guzmán?
I'm sorry?
How back can we go and request information?
Well, the further back you go, it's going to be just more time, it takes longer.
More work for you, okay.
Yeah, and, and not only that, but in these times, a lot of the people are working from home right now for the safety of the community, and it's just making it a little more difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Just in regards to that, Mr. Guzmán, I know I asked Mr. Perez about a year ago, I asked him for some information, and he said, I think that just two or three years back is what I remember, two or three years back because the, I think they shred the information after that. That, at least that's what he's told me. I'm not sure if that's accurate.
Yeah, that is correct, but you can request as far back, most of the information is shredded, but if requested and we have it, we will be responsible to turn it in.
Okay, but just for the record, the information I requested is just two years.
Do we have any questions on the consent agenda?
Ms. Alvarez, you mentioned the litigation. Do, do we have something pending? What, what is that item for, and would it be in the consent agenda, or is it its own item?
I think, Mr. Guzmán, I know Mr. Weller was going to be in the meeting, I guess he hasn't logged in, but I believe there's something that is practiced at other districts. I've seen other agendas where they act this. I'm not sure that it'd be part of the consent agenda, or just an additional item on there, just like the, what is it? The, the employment and resignation that's there every time, maybe the pending litigation could be on there for discussion.
Mr. Garcia, I guess I have a question, Madam President, on student enrollment. Mr. Garcia, how did, how did, how did we end up with the numbers? I know that right now with all this is going on, I know that Mr. Guzmán had a meeting with, or I think it was a commissioner, is, is that correct, Mr. Guzmán?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Morath, he's the Commissioner of Education for Texas.
And, and the thing is, of course, they, they gave, I guess, some guidelines, and then there's, there's other things, because I know that we already put something out, but is there going to be, like with pre-registration, how, how is, I know this is kind of, this is kind of creeping up on us, so what's, what's, what's going to go on there?
We have a online registration, we're gonna, we started online registration for a new to a district couple, about a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, and after this meeting that was, that was this past week, we got a little bit more clarification on how we're going to move forward in regards children are going to be allowed to either stay at home or come to school. So based on that, now we're gonna prepare our online registration to the, split it into the ones who are choosing to come to school and the one choosing to stay at home. So we should be deploying the, the online registration advertisement in this coming week. Let the people know, start registering online with the choices that, that they'll have.
And, Mr. Garcia, if you, if I may, the, an article that just came out from TEA that I was reading about, but I'm not too clear on it, I don't know if you could shed some information or you, Mr. Guzmán, regarding how attendance is going to be calculated, that there will be two new ways?
Is that for this coming year, Mr. Perez?
As far as calculating attendance for state funding.
Yeah. For this coming year, I know that the commissioner this week spoke twice and given us some direction as far as that is concerned. Basically, it depends if they're going to be coming in face-to-face, or if they're going to choose to be online. There's two different ways. One is at a certain time, just like it's face-to-face, let's say nine o'clock as an example. Those kids present on either in the campus or on the computer will be counted for funding. The other is, if they turn in certain amount of work showing progress, then that's another option when they would count them for ADA purposes, Mr. Perez. But again, we need a little more clarification from, from the state, but those are the two you may be mentioning.
Thank you very much, that's what I was, that's what I was reading.
Okay.
Mr. Guzmán, I also saw another article about funding that was going to be provided, like for face masks and I guess, maybe, what is it called? Sanitizer and all these other things. Is that something that we need to apply for, or is it coming in automatically?
There are no funds, what the, the commissioner did was TA actually ordered in bulk, and we receive, we're going to receive a certain allocation. I believe that the way it's going to work out, it's going to be sent to the regional center through Edinburgh Region 1, and they will let us know when our share is ready, so that we can make arrangements to go pick it up and store it in our facilities, and from that point, then we will distribute to the different campuses on, based on need.
And what are we going to do with all the masks that we bought? Are those just going to be backup or for employees, or?
Well, some of these are, like you say, disposable, and some of them are going to be for employees, even though the allocation is not just for students, and some of these, they're going to be extra, you know, and, and they even say that with what was, what we're going to receive from Region 1 or from the state, and what we have currently, we may even have to make more investments, but we have to play it by ear, depending on how many students show up face-to-face, the need of the staff also face-to-face, because that's what, what it's for, it's for those coming into the campus, for the safety of the professionals and students, staff and students.
I, I know you said allocation, I think I read an article, I think it was in the monitor, where this basically, the specific number of items we're going to be getting, correct?
That's correct. There may be a little confusion there, they, they've updated, there's different sites that have, but that is correct.
Every day. Right?
That is correct.
Based on, okay, yeah, I think I read that. Thank you.
That's correct.
Madam President, this is Stephen Weller, I just want to let you know I was able to join, had a connection problem for a moment, but I am here now.
Thank you so much.
If there's no other questions on the consent agenda, I'd like to move to, to approve consent agenda items eight through H as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And no further discussion, I have a motion by Mr. Science, second by Mr. Moreno, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I'm sorry, what was your vote, let me? I, so it's seven. One against, motion passes.
Madam President, I didn't vote against, I abstained. I didn't have a chance to review it, yes.
Okay, so it's set, it's six for it.
The echo.
That me?
That was, I think, that was, I think there was like, it said two Stevens.
Two Stevens, that's, that's one too many, that's maybe two too many.
I like the Twilight Zone.
On agenda item number five, eight through eight, that was six for it, zero against, and one abstained. Um, I have agenda item number six, consideration possible action regarding memorandum of understanding between Los Fresnos CISD and Roma ISD Emergency Crisis Management Event, Mr. Guzmán?
Yes, basically, what, what this is, is an agreement, an MOU, between Los Fresnos and Roma ISD, and what it's for, in a nutshell, is in case a hurricane, since it's hurricane season, comes towards the valley, specifically Los Fresnos, the island area, they're requesting permission to send their bus fleet, buses, their whole fleet to this higher grounds for safety reasons, and that's all it is for, in case it's needed, we will find a space so they can park their buses up in, in this area.
Have, have you done something like this with other?
Done it most of the time, sir, they've requested it several times, sometimes it's just between superintendent and superintendent, but because FEMA now has said that they prefer MOUs, there has to be like a paper, paper trail, especially if there's going to be some refunding, you know, financial refunding for, for the storage of the buses and, and maybe if buses get, you know, damaged.
And so, and it's how we've been with Los Fresnos, for different school districts?
He's the only one, doctor, not doctor, Mr. Gonzalo Salazar has always reached out. I think he used to go to Rio Grande before, but since we became, since I became the superintendent, he's contacted us and we've done it since then.
Mr. Guzmán, I imagine these contracts, they're, they're reviewed and they're by, 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 I guess, our attorney, Mr. Weller?
Basically, the agreement, the MOU is simple, plain and simple, but yes.
I still move to approve item number, I don't have, six, item number six as presented.
I'll second it, but I have a question for Mr. Guzmán.
You had a question, Mr. Science?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Guzmán, and, and I know you said for storage, do we have a particular area where we're going to have the storage in case we need it?
In case we, it'll be in parking, parking lots.
It will be, okay.
It could be, you know, in the pack.
Doesn't have to specify a particular area, it can be anywhere in the Roma ISD property or whatever, okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
So for agenda items, we have a motion by Mr. Moreno, a second by Mr. Science, and no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again. That was seven for it, zero against, and nobody abstaining, motion passes. Then the item number seven, Texas Education Agency Notice of Appointment of Monitor, I guess this is just for discussion, well, it is for discussion, and I just want to read the letter that we received, Mr. Guzmán and myself, we received this June 10th, and this has to do with the corrective action that we took or was in place or we signed it to do, to put in place. The letter is simply a notice of appointment for monitor from TA to Roma ISD, and it is again addressed to Mr. Guzmán and myself. The purpose of this letter is just to notify us of the appointment, they, to Roma ISD in regards to the complaint, your complaints, actually, it says complaints that were filed with TA with a certain member of the board acting as individually on behalf of the board of contract procurement issues and conflict of interest and violation, and it specifies the code. What this monitor, there will be item, should the monitor, I guess, even if she wasn't to come in, it is a female by the name of Sherry Hart, she has, has been assigned to the, to the school. I guess because of everything that's going on with the coronavirus, I'm not sure that she will be walking into the camp, into the district at any time. I'm not sure if it's going to be requesting information over the phone or emails and things like that. Whichever the case may be, we will comply with whatever her requests are. There will be a, a fee that needs to be paid to her, which is $85 an hour, and if travel is needed, those expenses shall be paid by the district as well. This, this took place, or she, I guess she was appointed, I'm not sure, Mr. Guzmán, was she appointed since since we got this letter, or since they received the corrective action, or how, how was that? You're muted.
My understanding, based on the letter that I've read, is she was appointed sometime before the letter, of course, and, but it wasn't at the same time when they sent the letter, they didn't have a monitor at that time.
Okay, so at this time, has any information been requested by her?
She reached out to me and said that she was looking at possibly a phone conference. When we got back, I explained to her that we have two weeks off, first two weeks of July, so she said she would contact me sometime after that and make some, some requests.
And how will we know when, when it's going to start, when the $85 per hour take place? I mean, what?
She'll send the bill, I guess, once, once she, if, if she decides to come down, you know, or if she starts charging us by the hour, that's all, I mean, I can ask her when, when she reaches out, but I'm sure we're going to get billed by either the agency or herself.
Mr. Guzmán, I have a question, Madam President.
Yeah.
Is the lady coming over, is she going to notify Central Office, or they're on their own, they'll walk, I mean?
Those are good, very good question, you know, the monitor can do pretty much what she feels is, is in the best interest of the district. My, my expectation would be that she would contact me directly and, and let me know if she's coming down, but again, she did reach out and she will contact me once we get back from, you know, in mid-July, and I guess I can ask a little more questions, but, but she, you know, in my experience, when monitors are assigned to districts, they, they can free roam, you know, whatever she feels, you can ask, come in and ask rec for records or attend board meetings. She's pretty much on her own, and she'll just probably notify hopefully me and I can go in and let you know.
About council, does, would council know something, a bit, you know, more information, or?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that I will reach out to council, so, so he can guide us if she requests, or when she requests, or tells us what she wants to do or not to do.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Guzmán, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Mr. Guzmán, you said that she might be coming, or she will be coming sometime in July. Okay, the only thing I'm asking is, are you going to keep us posted of any updates, or what's going to happen after she meets with you? And I would imagine, I don't know, Stephen and Mr. Perez, just let us know what's going on.
Let me just clarify, she said she would reach out, I'm not, I'm not sure if she's going to come, when she reaches out, she'll give me more directives, but yes, once, once she does make contact and whatever, you know, we can say whatever she allows us, I'll go ahead and, and share with the board.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Guzmán, is there any way that the board members can contact her, or we have to wait for her to contact us?
I will ask her, if you, I, I can ask her that question, but, you know, in the experience that I know, is she will tell me who she wants to talk to, what she wants to see, but I will reach out, or I'll, I'll ask her if, if there are individuals, board members, or if there, if there's any administrators that, that want to talk to her, if, if what the proper protocol would be for that.
Okay, yes, please do, sir, I'd be interested in doing that. And, I mean, in regards to us knowing when she comes in, I mean, if we're not doing anything wrong, I don't see why we'd have to worry about her coming in at any time or any other. So I mean, yes, obviously, we want to know, but I'm not, I, well, I guess I shouldn't be worried, or we shouldn't be worried. It's pretty much all administrative, from what I understand.
Mr. Guzmán, or maybe Mr. Weller, since you're on, on, at the meeting, would this be something that we may want to include in the agenda, as always, an item going forward, at least for the next year? I mean, taking this discussion every month going forward, if there's any discussion?
Well, I think that would be up to the board, if you wanted, on a monthly basis. That would be up to the, the board members and the superintendent, the board president, to request agenda items as you might think are necessary in terms of updates on what's happening in regard to the monetary, if there is anything to report, or if something does, is requested, want information about that, you could, you could put it on the agenda. If there's nothing, if there's nothing happening, then there wouldn't be much to discuss. But if there were, there was activities, then that could be something the board could be briefed on.
Yeah, we're, we're doing everything as needs to be, of course, this is stuff that happened prior to this administration. I'm sorry, Moreno, Mr. Moreno?
I guess, because, Mr. Weller's there, I, I have a question, is, I'm more than sure you've seen the letter?
Yes, sir.
And, and I've, I've just got, in other words, kind of like the wording, it says, I guess if you go to it, and it says, Board of Trustees, where it says oversee the management of public schools of the district, certain members, certain members of the Board of Trustees acting individually on behalf of the board, contract perturbance issues. of the Board of Trustees acting individually on behalf of the board, contract procurement issues and conflict of interest in violation of Texas Education Code, and it states it. It says members, Stephen. And, and if we go back to this, to this letter, was it a member? Was it several members? Because right there, it's saying members.
It says what? It says members?
Members. And if I'm not mistaken, the first letter wasn't, um, I, you know, I don't have. It doesn't say members.
Stephen.
Right here, it says members.
Okay.
The original le- letter, Mr. Moreno, I do have it on hand.
Uh, and, and, and that's, but what I'm getting at is this, in, in other words, is this a typo, or is this? Because right here, it's saying that members violated procurement issues and that, uh, the, the conflict. I'm mistaken, I don't think it was, um, everybody, Stephen.
Well.
I don't think, Stephen, any member, any one member is responsible for any procurement. I think that's all administrative, and, um, I mean, that, that's very, very obvious. You know, I could see how they wanna flip this around and, and, you know, make it wanna sound like one member, but I don't think there is a single agenda item that can be passed with just one member. Correct me if I am wrong. This is a board, and the board was working together. And the only board member that was not a part of this board during that, uh, we'll clear it up, was I believe Mr. Ricky Perez. So, um, all of this is pretty much administrative. I think, uh, we've discussed this letter thoroughly, Stephen, you and, and myself, because, uh, of course I had some questions. Uh, no one was ever able to explain themselves or to provide the information to anybody, uh, just the way that we approve checks that are already paid, that we have nothing to do with, and we really don't know. Uh, it, it's very, very hard to, to come out here and try to say that one member did anything. I mean, even if somebody wants to say that, uh, oh, I had to do it because she asked, nobody would get in trouble with just one vote. So, uh, every vote, every action, every item would have required at least four members to vote for something. So, uh, to me, it's just ridiculous that anybody would think that it's one member. Um, usually the president, just the way the letter is addressed to the president right now, you know, the president is the one that takes it. But, uh, I think that all of us know, and, and based on all of our experiences, we all know that this was action taken, uh, in the administrative office, and, you know, we did what we, we could, and we did, and we followed the instructions from the administrative office. If someone wants to go and say that, uh, you know, one member approved it, I know we had, uh, we had a meeting once, and we had the business manager come in and say that, uh, two board members approved something at the high school. Um, you took a lot of offense in that, Mr. Moreno, because you said you didn't, just the way I didn't either. So, I mean, it's, it's very easy to come out here and blame fingers, uh, point fingers, but, you know, we just need to make these corrections. They are administrative issues. Everything here was administrative. And, uh, you know, in regards to dates, I've already gone over every single disclosure. Uh, none of the dates, uh, there are filled out by board members. They are all filled out by notaries. There is no way to hide anything, because as you all know, anything that is notarized has a date on it by the notary, and it has a stamp. So, uh, you know, it's just kind of, uh, difficult to understand what reasoning or why, uh, you know, this action was taken. I don't mind following through with it. If it takes them, uh, to monitor Roma ISD, well, let them go ahead and do it. They can come and visit. I obviously don't have any issues with that, because I know that we have no, uh, absolute power, no absolute decision-making when it comes to anything with contracts and with checks. If it did have something to do with that, then I would not have paid forty thousand dollars more for, uh, Jero TC building. And I would not have approved a hundred and forty thousand dollars more for a change order. So, there is no way that just one board member, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, can ha- can or would have been able to approve any of these things that they're saying on that letter.
So with that said, that you're saying that four board members voted for that item, or just one board member? I mean, you said that.
Oh, of course, we cannot pass, no, Tony, nobody can pass an agenda.
Was that item presented to us? That's my question.
Which, which item?
The, the, the procurement where we, where we didn't go out for bids. That's, that's the case.
Oh, but we, and we didn't even pay it. If Kate, I'm sure you remember. Remember that they wanted to pay it, but we did not pay. No, we're not a shipping depot issue. That was one of the procurement issues.
We're not talking about shipping depot, cuz there was no loss there. We're talking about the cleaning of the puns.
Yeah, I, I, I think. Not board approved. That's my, that might, that's my comment.
Oh, the, the checks were approved by the board. They were approved in December. Yeah, they were approved, Mr. Science.
That's why you're saying it was administration, right?
We don't know how much the checks are for, Mr. Science. If, if they make a check today to any company, you know, let, let's say, uh, whatever local company you wanna say, you don't know what checks are being made out, Mr. Science. I mean, we, this is the way it's always worked. We've been on the board since twenty thirteen. We always approve checks, every single project that comes to us that is not bid out. For example, the face masks, was that come up? Was that brought up to us? It was a fifteen thousand dollar check. That was not brought to our attention. We had no idea that they were gonna purchase those masks, and they were purchased. So how can a board member have any say-so with anything that is purchased or any, any contract that is gonna be approved?
The only thing I'm saying is. For Mr. Wosman to be forced to sign something that he was not, I mean, I don't know, that's what I'm.
Well, I, I mean, I wanna see where Mr. Womack was being forced and who forced him to do it. I mean, that would be very interesting to know.
Say, nobody's gonna say I did it, of course. I'm just, I'm just concerned about the four votes going forward and approving the project. That's all that, that's all my concern.
Right, no, no, and it's very clear. That's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Moreno.
Stephen, and, and just because I think this is kind of, we're trying to confuse people. This, let's, let's not try to confuse people. The, the letter that we are talking about, this TEA letter, let's not confuse. This TEA letter right now, that we're talking about right now, it's about the monitor that they're sending over from the, uh, investigation, right, that was done by, that, that was done by TA. That was a letter that they said to us before, that states, that states who violated I guess the, the laws or the codes or whatever it was. Am I not, am I correct, Stephen?
The, the letter made reference, I, I think the first letter made reference to, uh, a, a board member or, or the, or administration. And this, the second letter, I'm not sure what.
No, it, it.
I have it here, but when I have it here, and it's very clearly, it says.
That, that is what we're talking about right now. We're not talking about, uh, anything, that's what this is. I, am I not correct, Stephen? Is this not a follow-up to that letter right there?
Yes, to the corrective, to the corrective action.
It is a follow-up to the first letter.
Okay, but, but that's what I'm asking, Stephen. We, we're saying here that it was administrative and, and stuff like that. In the first letter that we got, that, that, that letter that we got, nowhere does it say administrative. It says, if I'm not mistaken, I, I just don't have, it, it, it states who, and that's, 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 I started up, that's why, why did it say members? In that letter, it never stated members, it stated one member.
And the reason.
Board president.
Yeah, well, well, the reason that it stated that was because the complaint was made against one board member. You know, obviously, there was somebody that needed to, to put it out there, and, and, you know, luckily, we know who it is. But, you know, thank you to that member who, who filed that complaint.
Okay, now let me step in.
But, but, hold on, Ms. Alvarez. You have let everybody finish.
You know, no, because you will.
Everybody, okay, well.
Says that there's an investigation state that was conducted by TA, and that is the result. Now, you said it yourself, if they come down, Mr. Wosman will check to see, Mr. Weller will check to see if you can contact them. You can defend yourself, and I'm sure they have more time than we do, so that you can discuss it with them and try to defend yourself as whatever it is. Cuz it's very clear that it says former board president, and it says she.
They, they, see, that's, that's my, that's all I'm saying. They found issues. If they wouldn't have found issues, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be sending a monitor. That's what I'm saying. All I have against is why does it say members?
Miss, uh, Stephen.
Mr. Moreno, I honestly can't, I honestly can't remember what the initial letter said, um, in terms of precisely who it was directed to. I know there were some references to, to a board member, to answer that question, but I, but to, to understand who it was directed to. Look at it in details. I, if, if that answers your question, I'm trying to answer your question.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, I have a question, Stephen. Um, obviously, we've discussed this letter. Uh, we did request, I know Mr. Perez requested. I know I requested a meeting with the school attorney to discuss this and to kind of get an input and, uh, to see how you felt or how, you know, whoever responded to the complaints for TA. Because obviously, we didn't get a chance to respond, or, or, I, you know, as a, as a board member, I didn't get a chance to respond either. Uh, you know, it's very easy, like you wanna say, to confuse people. I mean, yeah, it, it's very, very easy to wanna make it seem like one person is in charge, knowing quite well that you need a majority. So, I mean, anybody with common sense knows that you cannot approve anything without a majority. And intimidating somebody with a job, you would need at least four people to be able to fire a person. Uh, never mind the lawsuits that would be associated with that. So, I don't think there was strings attached to anybody's hands to vote. I think everybody kind of voted. Uh, I think that this, uh, because it went on for so long, this investigation, they decided to just close it. And, you know, just kind of throw something out there. Uh, but I don't have a problem defending myself. Um, obviously, I don't see that, that, you know, it's something that can be, or that can change anything. What's done is done. Uh, I just hope that we continue to, to, you know, or at least we start with the right practices, you know, when it comes to procurement. And when it comes to going out for bids for certain projects, and that the administrative office takes those precautions, because there's no board member who is able to do any of these actions without the administrative help. So, I mean, that's, uh, very, very basic, you know, it's, uh, you know, procurement one-on-one. Uh, I studied it, I practiced it, I've attended the sessions, and that's how it works. Um, I'm willing to have a meeting, uh, if we need to have a meeting, but I would like to have a meeting with our school attorney, the way that we had requested, and conveniently was not done.
That's very good that you know all that on your own, that you've learned it. And I believe, Mr. Weller, you contacted all of the members, and, uh, I'm not sure that they may, maybe return their calls, cuz you did contact them, correct?
I, I'm, I, I was and remain happy to talk about any aspect of this with anybody that would like to discuss it. Um, would be more than pleased to answer anybody's questions and make sure that everybody feels, um, like we're getting all the information to them. Um, what I would say, and I just wanna mention this, but, um, I kinda wanna blow the open meetings whistle right now, because we're you know, we need to, the, the notice states appointment of the monitor, and I wanna make sure that we stay closely to that. The letter that we received does discuss some of these issues, so I don't think we're off of it, but I just wanna caution everybody. Um, try to, try to remain within the agenda item.
With that, with that said, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number seven.
This is for discussion.
Discussion, okay.
So, I guess it's just to let them know, or actually just to advise them, uh, of the notice that we have received from TA. And again, uh, Mr. Wosman, if I may at this time, uh, request that this be an additional agenda item for the next months to come until the corrective action has been completed. I believe it was for one year, that may be June of twenty twenty.
And, 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 and again, just for clarification, this thing is not based on assumptions, Stephen. It's because there were, correct?
Facts, and, yeah, and there was facts.
Stephen?
Pardon me, sir?
In other words, this, these are not assumptions. What they, what they're telling us, that the monitor is coming, in other words, they're not assumptions. In other words, that there were find, they were findings, correct?
I'm for a reason.
They made findings.
Okay. Okay.
And there is a monitor being appointed, you know, whether, whether we agree with all those findings is a separate question. But, you know, it, 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 it is, it does, has been agreed to at this point, and, you know, um, yeah, so, in my, my role to defend you as best I can and every single one of you, and that's what I intend to keep doing, to the best of my ability. And, and that's the way I feel about it. Uh, so, uh, I, yeah, yeah, there, there were findings, there is a monitor, and those are the facts.
Thank you.
I have one more question, uh, let it suffer for Stephen. Uh, Stephen, do you agree with those findings, based on the information that you have and the information that you reviewed? Because you reviewed all of this very, very carefully. Uh, you reviewed all, you were the one who actually reviewed the information that was sent back. And everything that was done was based on your recommendations. Uh, so, based on everything that you have seen or that you have reviewed, do you agree with the findings from TA?
If we're gonna discuss that, I would suggest we go into close.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't mind going to close meeting. That's fine. We can do that right now. I mean, we've requested a meeting and, and it just wasn't posted. Uh, instead, we had, uh, you know, an individual conversation with Stephen, but I think that we need to discuss it in a meeting.
If we're gonna do that, I think we oughta just, just create a more specific agenda item to that point.
Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and request an agenda item for the next meeting, uh, with our school attorney present, please.
Do you have a second person to do that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I'll second.
Madam President, are we moving on, or are we still in item seven?
Item number.
Yeah, that should have been it for the discussion on agenda item number seven. And we will move on to agenda item number eight, consideration possible action regarding the approval of an administrative agent for board secretary regarding, from board secretary regarding the upcoming Board of Trustees election. Mr. Garza, please, Garza.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Mr. Wosman. The purpose of my presentation is to ask the board to consider recommending an approving, an administrative agent for the upcoming Board of Trustees election. Some individuals address, uh, the administrative agent as the election administrator. Some of the duties of the administrative agent are as follows. Number one, accept candidate applications. Number two, order voting machines, equipment, ballots, et cetera. Uh, be that the study involved election documents, records, and other papers that are required to be maintained in the agent's office. The agent is authorized to perform any other official duties in the connection, uh, with the election. So in conclusion, I recommend for the board to consider naming an administrative agent.
Madam President, uh, Mr. Garza, I guess this question goes to you, if I may, Madam President. Uh, how many elections, Mr. Garza, have you handled, uh, if, uh, have you, off your mind? I mean, I'm pretty sure you, you, you'll remember all of them exactly, uh, as an administrative agent.
I've been, um, I've been the election administrator since two thousand and five, sir. Um, for the past fifteen years, I've been the election administrator. To give you the specific number of, uh, uh, of elections that I've been the election administrator, I had to go back and give you the specific numbers, sir. I, I don't wanna.
Four or five, or not, not that many?
Wasn't that?
Is that four or five, uh, an accurate number to say, or, or not that many elections?
Uh, you're closer.
Yeah.
I submit Mr. Garza's name. I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not approving yet. I mean, or making a motion, but you need the name to, right now, or are we gonna submit him after the meeting or?
You can make the recommendation today, right now.
I recommend, uh, Mr. Garza, you know, make the motion, I guess.
I'll second that, uh, Ms. Alvarez. You're, you're right, Tagu, he's been running the elections, that, at least from what I remember, it was twenty thirteen and then twenty fifteen, and then probably, uh, the last one. So it's been maybe three elections that, that we know for sure, so um, he pretty much has the experience, and, and I know that when it comes to providing us with information, uh, he's very good about that. Uh, make sure he sends the text messages and any and all information to all board members. Um, and obviously, it has to be someone with the school district, so, uh, so I'll second that motion, Mr. Salinas.
Yeah, thank you, very knowledgeable, you know, I mean, we've seen him on the last elections. So, I don't know, knows what he's doing, when it comes to administer, you know, that position.
Thank you, sir. Was that again?
Are you okay with it?
Do you accept the recommendation?
I'm here as an administrator, but I will do any duty that the board, uh, asked me to do. So, with pleasure, uh, I'll accept that, uh, recommendation.
Appreciate your help, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item number eight, uh, we have Mr. Vagometto Salinas making the recommendation for Mr. Leifengata to be the agent for the upcoming Board of Trustees election. Uh, I have also Mr., uh, so I guess Mr. Salinas making the motion as well, correct? Mr. Salinas makes the motion, and Mr. Galván seconded. So, if there is no further discussion, do I, uh, I'll put it into a vote. So all those in favor?
Hi.
All those against?
Congratulations, sir.
Zero against. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Garza, another election.
Thank you for that, trust. Thank you, trustees.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Agenda item number nine, employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals. Mr. Wosman?
No changes from what was presented, uh, on the boarded, uh, book. No changes from what was presented on the boarded book.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wuzman, on the, on what was presented on the board book, I believe that one of the resignations, at least what is on there, is Alfonso Vialpando, and I believe that I read the letter that he submitted and he signs it as Alonso. So is it Alfonso or Alonso?
Mr. Arza, are you still with us? It may be a typo, Mr. Arza, do you know the exact name?
I, I have always known him as Mr. Vialpando, I believe it's.
It's a typo, sir, sorry.
It's a typo, after this confirmed.
It is Alonso.
Alonso.
Yes.
Just wanted, I wanted to clarify that, so I didn't know if it would be a problem.
Yeah, no, thank you for the correction, Mr. Perez, Alonso, it's the correction there is Alonso Vialpando.
Do I have a motion to approve it on item number nine as presented?
I made, I made a motion.
I'll second.
Item number nine as presented.
Mr. Moreno, did the motion, I'm sorry?
I was the one making the, the second motion.
Do I have a motion by Mr. Moreno, second by Mr. Rodriguez, if no further discussion, all those in favor? All those against? Seven, zero, motion passes. And agenda item number ten, adjournment, do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Science, a second by Mr. Moreno, all those in favor?
Hi.
Zero against, motion passes, meeting adjourned at six forty-nine, everyone have a wonderful evening, thank you.
You too, take care, everybody.
It's good to see you all.